If I could get everybody's attention, I'll call this meeting to order. This is the March 3rd, 2025 Friendswood City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mike Servani's of New Hope Church, Friendswood. So if y'all wouldn't mind standing for the invocation and then remain standing for the pledges, and then we'll get going.
You know, Mayor, as I was coming out here, I was thinking of a certain proverb, and it's Proverbs 3:5 through 6. It says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean on your own understanding in all your ways. Acknowledge him, and he'll make your path straight." And so that's what I want to pray for tonight. Because I know there's always tension, possibly. There's a good possibility there's tension in the room. But you know what's great? If we trust in him, it'll all work out. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for my brothers and sisters here. Thank you for our leadership. Thank you, God, that you always make a way where there is no way. And so, God, we invite you into this place. And God, may you guide our steps. God, I thank you for the leadership that you put here, God. Your word reminds us that, Father, you've assigned them to these spots. And God, I know they're good stewards of their time and their resources, Father. And so may all things that are happening here today be in a peaceful way resolved. And God, may it benefit all in our city. Thank you, God, so much for all the folks that are here. And thank you for our leadership. Guide our steps. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you all. Have a seat. Item four is council for a day. Consider a proclamation declaring March 7th as Westwood Elementary School Day in the city of Friendswood. As I kind of mentioned before in my remarks, we've been doing this since 2018. I think we may have taken one year off because of COVID. But so this is, I think, the sixth or seventh year we've done this. So we've been doing it a while. We're so happy to get to do it. All these council members will agree that this is one of our favorite nights of all of our year-long council meetings because it's very fun to have the second graders in the room. We do it for a couple of reasons. One, we want the kids to learn how our government works a little bit. We want them to understand the value of community service. I mentioned to them that we are all volunteers up there. We don't get paid. This is our community service, not adjudicated. We volunteered to do this. We didn't have to. Right, Judge? It also helps foster leadership development in these kids. And these are, the kids are going to see up here in a couple of minutes, these are future leaders. So they're second graders now, but they've been selected from their classes. And we expect to see great things out of them in the future. Like I was saying, we have our oldest kids that are in eighth grade right now. So about to be high schoolers that came through this same program way back in 2018. And we also want to support FISD's character education program. So I'm going to introduce y'all and have you come up one at a time and take your seats. And look at that. Who did that? Letty, amazing. Letty Brish, everybody. I mean, she makes this place happen. All right, first off, City Secretary Sadie Daniel. Sadie, where are you? Come on up, Sadie. Her teacher is Mrs. Register. Where's Mrs. Register? Absent? Is there a lot of parking? Okay, council member, position number six, Channing Frost. And she's from Mrs. Susic's class. Yay, Mrs. Susic. Then council member, position number five, Michaela Oup. Making the long way. She's from Mrs.'s. Why does everybody want my seat? She's from Mrs. Smiley's class. Mrs. Smiley, hey, how are you? And then council member, position number four, Lucy Costa. And she's from Mrs. Modder's class. Uh-oh.
Hello, Lucy. You're right here. Best seat in the house.
Yeah, right next to the mayor. Our mayor is Cash Allen, also from Mrs. Susic's class. Come on up, Cash. Council member, position number three, Frankie LeShack. How'd I do on your name, Frankie? Good, okay. I'll take a good. He is from Mrs. Owen's class. Mrs. Owen? Mrs. Owen here? She couldn't make it, okay. She's taking a tardy. Oh, here's. Is that Mrs. Register? Hey. I didn't want to miss you, right? Okay, council member, position two, Lucy Holland. From Mrs. Trahan's class. Mrs. Trahan. Council member, position number one, Lincoln Robey.
He's number one.
Number one. From Mrs. Hubbell's class. And our previous, our city attorney didn't make it. So Lincoln is actually going to do two jobs tonight, aren't you, Lincoln? He's going to do council position one and the city attorney, the two easiest jobs up here. Pretty easy to pinch-hit for the city attorney, I think. Also, so, and then our city manager, Sanvir Bridgemohan. That's the toughest job right there, Sanvir. Good luck with that. So, and Sanvir is from Mrs. Collins' class. Mrs. Collins, okay, so. All right, well, I'm going to get out of these kids' way and let them do their thing, so. Who's got the first line? Mayor, you got the first line?
Consider a proclamation declaring March 7th, 2025, as a Westwood Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. Would the city manager please give the council an overview of the item?
Consider, Mayor and council, tonight you have before you a proposed proclamation declaring March 7th, 2025, Westwood Elementary Day in Friendswood, Texas. As you know, Westwood Elementary is part of the Friendswood Independent School District and is an exemplary campus and a source of pride for our community.
Has our city attorney approved the wording of the proposed proclamation?
Yes, Mayor. I have drafted the wording of the proposed proclamation, and it is in line with the vision statement of the city of Friendswood.
Would the city's secretary please read the city's vision statement for the record?
The city of Friendswood has the following statement as a vision. Together we build our future and friendly place to live, work, play, learn, and worship.
Thank you. Now I will read the proposed proclamation. This proposed proclamation of the city of Friendswood, Texas, declares March 7th, 2025, as a Westwood Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. It is now time to take a vote. Do I have a motion accepting the proposed proclamation?
I move to that we accept the proposed proclamation as presented.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, accepting the proposed proclamation. Is there any discussion?
At Westwood Elementary, we pledge to be kids with character, and we pledge to be bucket fillers.
At Westwood Elementary, we will be honest, reliable, and worthy of trust.
We will be responsible and fair in doing what we must.
At Westwood Elementary, with our words and actions, we show that we care.
We will be good citizens and do our share.
At Westwood Elementary, we will respect ourselves and others too.
Would the, would the city secretary please read the motion on the table?
We have a motion by the council member, Lincoln, and a second from council member Lucy to accept the proposed proclamation of the city of Friendswood, Texas, declaring March 7th, 2025, as Westwood Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, Westwood Elementary School. With there being no other business, I adjourn this council for a day meeting.
Hey, good job, guys. Have you guys all come in front, okay? You guys come down here and stand in front. And council members, if you'll take positions behind the dais, we'll get a group picture here.
Good job, good job.
Excellent. Excellent job. Good job.
Uh, I don't know. That should be good.
Are we leaning in or?
I don't know.
I don't know. Are we leaning?
I think we're just. Squish, squish, squish.
Saying squish so far.
Okay. All right, ready? Can you lower yours just a little? Yes, Mayor, thank you. All right, three, two, one. Three, two, one. And parents, these pictures will be on the city's Facebook page and Instagram.
Stephen needs some pictures.
Oh, teachers, do you want to come up as well? And any administrators? On the end. On the end, yeah. All right, ready? Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Uh, yeah, that's good. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Parents, uh. Everybody? We get going here. Item number five, council comments and reports. Volunteers? Anyone?
Yes.
Council member Branson? Oh, yeah.
Am I on?
Yeah, you are.
It's run, okay. I just wanted to mention, and I think the city manager is going to cover it, but there it is right there. Small Business Weeks, CEDC, we're very excited about this. This is our second annual. Between last year and this year, we actually had a forum that we gathered of small business owners in the community and got their feedback on things we did well last year, things that maybe we can improve upon this year, items they might be interested in hearing about. So I really do encourage you, Friendswood has a ton of small business owners. That entrepreneurial spirit is alive and well in Friendswood. And I would encourage you all to come and participate. It's a week-long of activities. We're the only one in the area, not that I'm bragging. But I do want to thank Stephen and Aubrey and our chairman of that group, CEDC, Susan Hazemikas. So please come join us.
Council member Hanks.
I attended a community-wide meeting on social ministries. We have several food pantries operating in our community, and I was representing our city at that meeting. And our city was also represented. And I had feedback afterwards from people who attended that about how impressed they are with our EMS, our fire department, our police chief, I mean, our police department and our city staff on how much they do. I think there's, well, there are a lot of things that are going on to aid people that are in need that we just don't hear about a lot. But they're well organized. And everyone at that meeting, there were probably 30 people from around the community there, and everyone was very impressed with everything that the city was doing. So Murad, please pass that on to your staff, too, and thank them. And I was so glad they had the opportunity to let others know what all the city offers and does. And so also, this, speaking of volunteers, because many of them are volunteers, this Saturday is the Library Gala. I won't steal your thunder because I know it's in your report. There are a few tickets left, but they are going fast, and there are just a few left. So if you want to get online and look at it. But again, thanks to those volunteers that are putting that together. And I know also that you have in the report, in your report, you're going to talk about some things in the fire station. I hope we get to tour pretty soon. I know that we're going to be approving some walkthrough things. But anyway, thank you very much.
Council member Griffin.
Well, I wasn't going to mention it, but I am now. My dad, great guy, he passed away Saturday morning. And Dr. Robert J. Griffin, we affectionately called him Pappy, was a wonderful man, and his memory we revere, and his departure we now deplore. I do want to thank EMS, our staff, and our EMS is the best. He fell down over at the Village on the Park and broke his hip and was immediately rushed over to Southeast Memorial Hospital, where he birthed probably over 3,200 kids. And I was with him when he passed away Saturday morning. And it's fitting that he passed away where he gave so many lives. But I'm going to miss the guy. He's a good guy. So I do want to thank EMS. They did a great job. That's all.
Thank you, Robert. I want to, on the behalf of the rest of the city council and all the city staff, give you our condolences. Pappy was a great guy, and he will be missed.
Appreciate that. All of you appreciate it.
Mayor Protem Matranga.
Nothing tonight.
Whoa, council member Erwin. Nothing. Well, we'll move on. Item six is public comment. I got a stack of cards here. Catherine Hale. Come on up while I read this. To comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the city council will listen to public comment, may one, refer the item to city management for further action, or two, direct staff to place an item on a future agenda during public comment. The public shall comply with the council's rules of decorum.
Hi, my name is Catherine Hale, and I live in Wilderness Trails. I am asking city council to remove, or at least table, item 12, Falling Leaf Ranch Public Improvement District Authorization. The extremely packed notice, 679-page agenda, was posted, I know legally, after 5:00 PM on a Friday. That's not enough time to contact our 500 homes and over 1,000 homeowners who could be affected and who have raised concerns about this for many reasons. One reason, and yes, I am speaking again, of the proposed Friendswood Parkway expansion, which is in this PID bond document. Once again, it has moved behind Wilderness Trails. Once again, I will remind citizens and council that this was voted down as part of a bond election. It was moved west, shown on thoroughfare maps, still is. It was moved back, apparently, when a family in the middle of their new home construction found out that the new route was moved feet away from their home for a new development. They sued the city, as you know. And as part of the settlement, apparently, the route has moved back to where it had been 30 years ago. No one in our neighborhood was informed by legal notice, and it's not on the city thoroughfare plan. We have heard of proposed HAC, town halls and meetings, but we have heard nothing from our own HAC representatives, which is Sally and Marrett. And now, reading the PID documents, it seems like this is a done deal. Once again, who really is benefiting from this? And it is not our neighborhood. For that reason and many more, which others will speak about tonight, I am asking you to not vote on this tonight, or to slow down. Do your own research. Ask Google. Read a newspaper. Ask questions. And most importantly, get answers not only from our developers and our city staff, but also listen. Really, really listen and get answers from the voters who put you all here. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Hale.
I have got, hang on, I'm not talking yet. Could you give? My name's Randy Hale, and I live with her in Wilderness Trail. And I'm not going to speak exactly about what she did. She covered debt base pretty well, I think. But I want to preface what I'm saying with, I am not opposed to any sort of good commercial or residential development in the city of Friendswood if it's done with the developers' dollars and not with our future tax dollars, current or future tax dollars. And I'm here to ask you to vote also, though, not to approve or move forward with item number 12. I know a lot of you gotten emails from me, questions, all kinds of things in the past about this particular topic, from the thoroughfare to spending money, that I don't understand why we're spending. But anyway, I'm just going to read this real quick. First time I saw acronyms, TIRS and PID show up in our city council agenda items, I had questions. I even requested a town hall be held to help citizens understand better what those acronyms were. That was what, less than two years ago, I believe? And still no town hall took place. And here we are, we now have two TIRSs. And tonight, some are looking at taking the first step of our second PID bond debt authorization, which is what this approval will lead to. And it's going to be, just, this one's just about 16 million. Most of you know, I have long called TIRS number two, a bond election workaround. We have moved way beyond that decision and are looking at the next step, which is the PID bonds. Most know that, well, anyway, no town hall. But I do hope one of you, during your public discussion of creating this PID bond debt authorization, will ask and get answers, real answers, to the questions that I have listed below. Just quickly, will the section of Friendswood Parkway that will traverse the JMK Falling Leaf Development, regardless of its path, be 100% paid for with the proposed PID bond debt money? Two, will 100% of the PID bond debt that will fund that section of Parkway be paid 100% with TIRS two incremental city of Friendswood tax dollars? And three, will PID bond debt funds be used to pay for JMK 5 Falling Leaf paving of, as an example, their surface streets within their subdivision? What percentage, 3A, what percentage of that surface street paving will be paid for with the funds from the PID bond debt? It's 100% as I read it. And there's two other questions. I've submitted all the questions to you guys. I hope, when the time comes later, y'all will go through these questions, discuss them, ask them, seek answers to them on the record, and then I will hope that you vote no on the item.
Thank you, Randy. Michael Ross.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's a pleasure to be in front of you again. As many of you probably know, I'm running for position six. Where Honorable Brent Erwin is stepping down. I have an admirable opponent. His name is Tom Hinckley. He's a really nice guy. I like him a lot. The reason I'm up here speaking on this particular subject, which is, again, this PID that Randy just spoke about, is I have a particular expertise in the subject. I am a developer. I have spent the last 25 years being involved in public finance districts like MUDs, MMDs, PIDs, TIRS. I have rarely seen a PID or a TIRS structured the way I have in both city center PID and city center TIRS 1, or this particular one that's a subject right now. The main concern I have on these particular subjects, especially the current one that's at hand right now, is the exemption that was placed in the development agreement under Texas Local Government Code 252022 subsection 9A. And that is giving the developer the ability to proceed with the project without a public bid. How can Friendswood spend taxpayer dollars without formatted public bid process? I'm seeing it happen over in TIRS 1 and city center PID right now. So now we have a developer who is now conveniently the contractor. How is that possible? That does not pass the smell test. I don't know that that's what y'all signed up for, but that's what you have now. Now, I've looked at the structure of the bonds and how they've been structured. And Mo is a very good city manager. But at the same time, the way that bond has been, you know, passed down to the citizens as this can't possibly hurt the city because the developer is solely responsible for payment of the debt. I can show you about five cities in this Texas market that have had PID bonds set up just like this that have failed. And when they failed, the developer couldn't afford to pay them. The city had to step in or else have it go into fault. Now, when it goes into fault, yeah, that's the bondholders that are in trouble. But it's also the city's credit. And don't think it's not happening because every one of those cities has stepped up and started making the payments on the PID assessments because there aren't enough, in this case, a commercial deal, in this case, a residential deal. There aren't assessments there to pay the bond debt. The city can't afford to have its credit ruined by this structure. So I would ask you to table this. Think about an MMD or a MUD or some other form as opposed to this PID, and have the actual public bid process in place. Don't front-end the money for the developers. They should have the financial wherewithal to do a project without having this development funded by the PIDs, selling bonds in advance. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Adlerbaugh.
Good evening. I live at 58 Eldorado Drive, and this is in regards to the Park and Trail Master Plan. It identifies Lundee Park as a potential proposal. If you're not familiar with this, Eldorado is a one-way-in, one-way-out off of Lundee Road. And the plan clearly says that there's no access to the 24 acres that you identify as a potential Lundee Park. So one of the proposals is to use Eldorado, that's a one-way-in, one-way-out, to access this park. That I would just ask you to look at other options. This, if you're not familiar with it, is just, the 24 acres is just off of 528 by the fire station and the Harbor Church. So I would, I've talked to a number of the neighbors, and of course, we all do not feel that that's a reasonable plan. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Penny Dunn.
I live on Eldorado, Eldorado Drive. And we bought and moved in in 1980. We have enjoyed the country life. We have enjoyed the country life, the quietness. We raised our family there, and now we're raising grandchildren there. If the only access to this would-be park is on my street, that's just unacceptable. It's my knowledge that when a BMX park and skateboarders and start doing their thing, they're not little grandchildren. They're not even middle teenagers. They're usually young adults or older teenagers that perhaps are doing drugs, that they get drunk. I'm assuming that because of the way the world is today. I really don't want that in my backyard. And this place that is landlocked, that you want to put this BMX park on, is at my back door. And I have five acres, and I have relished that my whole life. And I would so appreciate you not voting to have this done. Let's see. What does the park provide? It provides to me riffraff, people that are looking for something to do, get in trouble, hang out. This is not acceptable. And then with these types of parks, comes increased crime, traffic and noise. That is not what we want in our neighborhood. Also, at nighttime, you have to be careful driving around our little circle of houses because someone's out there walking their children or their dogs. We can't have people buzzing in and out of the park in our neighborhood. So please don't vote for doing this. Just vote against it. I do not feel that this plan for Lundie Park to become a skateboard BMW park is appropriate for many reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Forman.
Good evening. Thanks for your time. I just wanted to come and tell the city thanks. There were a couple departments here at the city that were very helpful to us in our, for our Marty Pause Parade event. This was the second year that we've held this event. We start at Old City Park. We head over to Stevenson Park. We cover a lot of ground. Last year, I think we had thirty-four dogs in our parade. This year, we tripled our numbers. And the city was so helpful in getting a banner across the road and some additional signage up for us that was extremely helpful to let the community know what was going on. So I just thought that there were some people that needed to be thanked. In particular, oh, and I just want to let you know that we really have outreach for other nonprofits here in the city. We always coincide this event with the farmer's market so we can have some crossover and drive more sales to them. Three Little Pities helps us out and tells us all about how to do dog control. It's great. We had volunteers from the high school that were instrumental and just so great, lining the parade ground, keeping everybody straight, keeping the distance between the dogs. And Friendswood Animal Control also helped out. So thanks so much. I also wanted to recognize Myra and Michelle at Public Works. They got our banner up, got it up. They were just great. And Michael Boyett at the Parks and Rec just gave us some great advice about how to get this done and not drive everybody crazy. So thank you very much. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Katie Chandler.
Good evening. My name's Katie Chandler. I'm a mother of five in Friendswood ISD Schools, and I own Friendswood Scoop Shop. Happy to see you all tonight. I really, I wanted to just be present, and I'm going to continue to be present because I just want to ensure that the ordinances are revisited and clarified. And I want to be here to ensure that small businesses are supported. I know that you all are sitting in your seats because you decided you wanted to make a positive influence on our community. And so I just want to urge you guys to encourage the city staff to be more pro-small business, to clarify ordinances, specifically special events, outdoor sales events, mobile vendors, as we've talked in the past. And I encourage you all to do further research on those categories. I see that item thirteen is on the agenda. I don't totally know what is going to be presented. But I really urge you guys to, when these ordinance revisions are presented, to think about, will this change enhance, encourage and help our community thrive? Do adding restrictions, limits and fees support small businesses or drive them away? Nationally, small businesses make up ninety-nine percent of businesses. They're an important part of our community. I know big business brings in big tax dollars, but small businesses are really important for our community as well. We bring a lot of love to the community, and we hope to continue doing that. It's very difficult as a small business to be in a situation that we've been in with other small businesses experiencing the same thing as I am, where it's a constant battle. And we don't want to have that interface anymore. We think that it's unnecessary. We've looked at other neighboring cities and just how they respond and how they react to something I guess I'll probably have to talk on further. But an example is when a medallion is not on a food truck, if they're, show up in Pearland, when they're approached by the ordinance, they are given a set of guidelines of how they can be part of their medallion program instead of runoff. So I think a partnership is something that we're looking for.
Thank you. Evelyn Timmons.
Thank you. First of all, I'm sorry about your father, but I want you to know he had some very good years there because I spent many years there with my mother-in-law, and they had a lot of fun. Rest assured. I'm coming in with regard to the park issue that you're going to be addressing today. And it's been a long time since I've been here. And we used to talk from over there, and it was a little easier to hear people from there. I just thought I would tell you that. The first thing I'd like to mention, and I didn't find out about this long. I have kind of lost interest in following government in the last few years. But I was told about this yesterday and what was going to happen today, and I just had to speak up. And when I looked at the first page of the hundred and sixty-one pages, I only printed sixty of them. I just didn't have enough paper to finish. It looked kind of boring anyway, but I got what I needed. The first thing I saw was a needs assessment was done. And then when I saw you had input from people for personal in-person meetings, and they were all done January twenty-sixth, January thirty or thirty-one. So if you happened to be here a year ago, January, you might have had a chance to go to one of those. I didn't know about it. I didn't go. But I'm just, that kind of floored me that that input was that long ago. And I don't know who all, I didn't have time to read who all took part in that. But the second thing I wanted to talk about a little bit was the Lundie Lane Park, which looks like it's addressed for twenty, basically twenty-five acres for a community park. And as a couple of people have already said, you plan to have practice fields for football, soccer, lacrosse and tennis, pickleball courts fulfilling the need for recreation, a new swimming pool, a skate park and a BMX bike park. And I'm thinking, my God, we can barely drive into our street with the people living there. I've lived on Lundie Lane for thirty years. The number of houses there has doubled. And if you came and looked at it, you'd see there's not a whole lot of room left for anybody else. But the worst thing that we're seeing about it right now is the access. And that goes for those of us that live there. It took me at least two times as much to get here, and that's cutting through the parking lot at McDonald's and cutting some lady off, I mean, to get here. And it used to take me five. I used to count three cars on 528 and wondered where the people were. We loved it. But anyway, so the access thing that kind of really got to me because my friends tell me when they come to visit, oh, we know how to go there. Go straight through the light. It's always green. Do a quick hue and, that's fabulous. Easier, cut through the church. So they get there. I've sat there for three lights before. And if you're not the first one in line to turn to get home on Lundie, you can forget it because if that person is the one second slow, you don't get through. Max two people get through there. The other one coming from more, does that mean three minutes? Man, I thought I talked faster than that. Okay. The only other thing I need to say is about the water facilities, the sewage that would be needed. They said it was a high priority because it would have a swimming pool. Thirty years ago, we had to pay eight hundred dollars to the city for sewage linkage. And the man took my check and started laughing. I said, what's the matter? He said, well, you'll never see it. And I thought, whoa, that's thirty years ago. And we don't have sewer lines that are public. And I don't know where they're going to get it for there. Maybe the church has it. And so I guess Ron Carter sends all of his cars to have them practice on our street too. And if any of you go that way sometime, just do it for fun. Everybody else does.
Thank you. Okay, item seven, special recognition and acknowledgements. Present the City of Friendswood Five-Star Spirit Award for the fourth quarter of 2024 to Daniel Franks, the senior sign technician in the Public Works Department. City Manager Murad Kabiri.
Yes, sir. Well, I have the great honor of presenting to you all the Five-Star Spirit Award winner for this quarter. Daniel Franks has been with us less than a year, and he's already made an impression in our community that's something to be very proud of. On New Year's Eve, he was driving down Sunset and noticed an elderly gentleman ahead of him that hit a bump or something and lost all the tools in the back of his truck. The elderly gentleman stopped his vehicle, got out and tried to start picking up all the tools. Daniel, coming up to the scene, realized that it's not a safe condition to be doing that, stopped, asked the guy to get back in his truck, and then proceeded to pick up all the tools for the elderly gentleman. He didn't have to do that, but it was a testament to the type of individual he is and the type of employees we have here in Friendswood. So for that, we'd like to commend you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight with my wife, Angelica. I just, like you said, I haven't been here very long. It's like, what, nine months? So it's been wonderful. I came from Alvin, Texas. I've worked for the city of Alvin for almost ten years. And I came over here, and I love, absolutely love it. I love the community. I love the staff. It's been wonderful. And thanks for having me. And thanks for nominating me for this.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Daniel. All right, item eight, eight A, receive the Planning and Zoning Commission Annual Report presented by Planning and Zoning Chairman Thomas Hinckley. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've got the slides. I've just got a summary version I'll run through real quick. So this is our Planning and Zoning Annual Report for 2024. And first, we'll start with our members. So we have Staff Support Becky Bennett, Aubrey Harburn and Karen Horner. Commissioners Tom Hinckley, Marcus Rives, Travis Mann, Brian Bounds, Marcia Conrad, Willie Anderson, and our newest member Stacy Phillips. And just on that note, I just, it's been brought up several times. We wanted to mention that we did lose Richard Sassen last year. And our council liaisons are Trish Hanks and Alternative is Joe Matranga. Next, we have our P and Z action items taken this year. For Platts, we had eleven preliminary Platts approved, two preliminary Platt extensions approved, nine final Platts, replats approved. Commercial site plans. Commercial site plans, we had four site plans approved and one amendment extension approved. On zone changes and master plans, we had developed recommendations on five zoning changes and one master plan amendment. Ordnance changes, we had, we developed recommendations on three ordinance changes and zero resolutions. And our key 2024 P and Z activities. We held sixteen commission meetings, same as 2023. We also had a retreat and numerous subcommittee meetings. We replaced the official zoning map and updated the procedure for updating the map. Amended zoning ordinance section three regarding the official zoning map and section nine regarding SUPs. Provided a recommendation to city council following the Parking Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Amended the Planning and Zoning Commission rules of procedure with minor changes. Discussed the possibilities of allowing mobile vendors with council. LED window lighting removed from all businesses with help of code enforcement. Two commissioners attended the APA Texas Conference and held a retreat to establish and prioritize goals of the commission. Yeah, key 2025 P and Z projects. Continue working with staff and council to update the comprehensive plan. Zoning ordinance incorporate missing sections and update as necessary. Commercial activities, special events, outdoor sales, review regulations and definitions. Accessory structures, review regulations and definitions. Monitor development along 528. Consider possibilities such as microzoning and review uses currently allowed along 528. Review and recommend updates to the Design Criteria Manual regarding downtown district amenities, appendix E. Review planning topics and determine if ordinances are necessary in relation to drones and aerial taxis. Monitor Texas Legislative Session Changes. And training on various planning-related topics to be determined, which is a program that Aubrey brought back last year for us. Any questions or concerns? I'll just say thank you, Tom, for all the hard work you guys do on Planning and Zoning. It kind of is one of those committees that, again, we have all volunteers, citizens that come and represent us on the Planning and Zoning. Marcus Rives is in the audience. I don't see any other current commissioners, but thank you all for doing that. It's a lot of hard work. Aubrey, Becky, you guys do a great job guiding them. And so thank you so much for all you've done. And thank you for saying a word about Richard, too. We miss him. Any other comments? Thank you all.
Thank you very much. You do a lot of work, you and your team.
Okay, eight B, receive the Zoning Board of Adjustments Annual Report. We have that in our backup material. Phil Radozo, I see you out in the audience. Thank you again for serving as the chairman of that board. Appreciate it. We hope that you don't get a whole lot of work, but you know, it's not always a good thing when something has to go to ZBOA. But thank you for continuing to serve. All right, item nine is a work session topic. Receive a presentation on the City of Friendswood Master Drainage Plan Study Goals. Engineering Director Hill Arias will introduce presenter. Item will be presented by Half Associates Water Resources Team Leader Jason Becker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce you to this gentleman on my left. Jason Becker with Half Associates. And he's here to present an overview on our master drainage plan and the study goals that we have with that. So as many of you know, the city has undertaken a study to develop a long-term data-driven approach to managing stormwater and reducing flood risk in Friendswood. This effort will help assess current drainage conditions, identify critical improvements and outline funding strategies to implement future projects. Jason and his team have been working closely with the city already to ensure this plan is comprehensive and actionable. With that, I'll turn it over to Jason.
Thanks, Hill.
Good evening. Thank you, Hill. It's an honor to be here in front of you all to talk about the importance of this plan and go into a little bit more about the study goals and key deliverables. I'm going to start by talking briefly about the team and talk a little more about the vision that Half Associates that Half Associates and our team has for this master drainage plan. I want to focus quickly on some of the major scope items and then really highlight the key deliverables that the city is going to receive as part of this project. I'm excited to be the project manager with Half Associates for this project. We have a very great team assembled. Gage Engineering is the program manager lending support from the city side. Half is supported by Garver, Torres, Holloway, and HTS. And we all bring a diverse set of skills to be able to tackle all these different tasks as part of this project. A brief background, so Phase Two, the previous master drainage plan was completed in 2007. That's now over a decade old. There's a need to, to refresh it, to introduce new information, to look at what's happened since 2007 and update it with a new comprehensive information. There's also other projects going on in the Clear Creek watershed. Some of you may know of the remapping efforts that have been going on on the flood control side, Harris County. There's a lot of new information out there that we want to pull into this to make this comprehensive and more up to date. And I think this is a really critical slide. What, what is the vision for this master drainage plan? The goal here is that this master drainage plan is a dynamic roadmap. It's a dynamic roadmap for the city to help plan for the current needs as well as for the future needs. Collaboration and effective engagement are going to be essential parts to the completion of this project. We want to improve resiliency and reduce flood risk to residents and businesses by doing those three things on the right side of the slide. We want to identify areas of high flood risk now and in the future. We want to look at identifying drainage projects that are going to minimize that flood risk. We want to outline a strategy to implement these projects. How do we get them funded? How do we get them constructed? And above all, the goal is to identify targeted solutions to meet Friendswood's specific needs and make sure that these are not going to just sit on a shelf, they're going to actually be implemented and bring benefits to the city. So the key outcomes of this study, there are four major ones. The first one is project recommendations. We want to identify projects that the city can then implement, looking at both regional and local solutions, small to medium to large projects. And then we want to also look at flood risk information. How can the city use this information to better prepare for emergency management, flood awareness, public engagement? A lot of great information is expected to come out of this project. As I mentioned, this is a roadmap for the city. And so how does the city use this now as well as into the future to plan for future development, minimize flood risk, and create smart solutions in terms of development? And last, we want to look at a centralized database. Where can we have all this information that we collect and generate in one place so that it's accessible, it's easy to use, and it's in one location to be benefiting the city, the city of resources, as well as the public? So here's the city limits everyone here is well aware of. It's about twenty-one square miles, nine different subwatersheds, different pieces of the city that we're going to be looking at individually. The real key here is that we want to look at what's happening. We're focused inside the city limits, but we want to make sure that we are looking at water that is coming from outside the city bounds. We also know how important Clear Creek is in influencing the drainage throughout the city. So we want to make sure that we are taking an updated look at that and incorporating that appropriately into our analysis so that, as Hill said, this is a comprehensive look at what is happening throughout the city. There's eight main study tasks as part of this project grouped into two major phases. The first phase, I, I view that as, let's get our baseline created. It's collecting data, it's reaching out to the community, to stakeholders, to the city. It's combining all this information and figuring out really where is the flood risk now and where is it expected to be in the future? Once we end Phase One, we're going to move into Phase Two and really focus on where do these projects need to be? Where are the areas of flood risk? What's the city currently looking at doing? And how do we supplement that with new ideas for projects, big and small? We have some additional tasks, six, seven, eight. We're going to be looking at drainage criteria, I'll touch on that in a moment. We're going to be developing a flood risk map that's going to be providing internal and external-facing information that again is a tool for the city to use. And last, of course, it wouldn't be complete without a, a big report that's going to have a lot of great information that's going to highlight what the recommendations are and what the key findings from the study are. And I'm going to go through very quickly each of these and highlight some of the key parts of them. So first, no effective master drainage plan is complete without community outreach. That is critical. And so we're going to be looking at developing a citizen action plan. How can the community provide their input, provide their thoughts on what we are generating and what we are analyzing? We're going to be managing a stakeholder database. We're going to be creating a project website that people can access and share their thoughts, provide their commentary. Collecting firsthand accounts of flooding and drainage issues is, is essential to this study. We have two public meetings. This is our first City Council presentation, really want a high-level goals and deliverables overview. And we're going to have two subsequent public meetings focused on that Phase One results and then the Phase Two results after that. At the end, we're going to be looking at generating some key messaging materials. So how can we, in a condensed one, two-page summary, provide to the city staff, to the council, to the public, here's a summary of what we looked at and our recommendations to be implemented? After community outreach, coordination is up there as well. And so we have three different levels of coordination. We're going to be meeting with the city regularly to provide updates, to discuss major decisions. We're going to have a series of in-person workshops to really drive collaboration. We want to include major stakeholders, drainage districts, key landholders, other people who we want to get their input on what is going on now, what are you seeing? And how can we incorporate that into the plan for the future? And of course, the half-team will be meeting regularly to make sure that we are all aligned and that we continue to make progress and meet the schedule that we have set forth already. And so a lot of coordination at different levels really to drive the success of this project. Data collection, this is going to be a critical initial step. We're going to be collecting a whole lot of different information. Digital information about the city's infrastructure, historical information about what areas have flooded, why, what have people observed? That's going to really help us zoom in to understand the flood risk that we have there. We're going to look at what's missing, what information do we need to collect that's critical? How can we fill some of those gaps? And then how can I prepare that central GIS database I talked about? Everything is going to be in one place, we're going to have the old information, we're going to have the new information, it's going to be easy to access. Task four is the model development. There's a lot on here, but essentially what this is, is this is our baseline understanding of flood risk. It's leveraging the information that's out there already. It's incorporating the channels that run through the city, the storm sewer and systems that are running throughout the city. We want to look at riverine and urban flooding to produce an updated assessment of existing risk as well as looking into the future, estimating future land use and how that's going to affect drainage down the road. So once we have that baseline conditions, we validate it, we make sure that it's really representing what is going on in the city right now, we're going to move to task five, which is project development. We want to understand what is the city doing right now, working with Hill and his staff to say, here are the current projects. Where do we really need to add some additional projects? Where are the areas where the highest risk remains? And so we want to look at the feasibility of different alternatives. We want to evaluate what benefits those alternatives may have. And at the end of the day, screen and prioritize out. Here's how we think you should recommend and implement these different projects, big, small, different parts of the city. That's going to be the roadmap for that future implementation part I talked about. As part of this project, we also want to look at drainage criteria. And we're going to look at reviewing what current stormwater management ordinances are there, floodplain management ordinances, figuring out, is there a need for change? Do there need to be tweaks made? And so we're going to do a comprehensive review of that, leveraging our experience in reviewing this type of documentation to prepare some recommendations and an updated criteria manual for review and future adoption. Task seven is the flood risk web map. I'm personally excited about this one because this is how we bring the study results to y'all, to the city. We're going to look at having all that information we talked about, collecting and generating. It's all going to be available. There could be a forward-facing, public-oriented side where we can, you know, limit what access they have and show them, here's the results, here are the projects that we're proposing. And we can also have a city side, here's all the information, here's the backup that can be used as an effective planning tool going forward. We're going to be developing this web map and we're going to be providing training to the city so they really can use this as a tool. This is the building block, you could add information to it. And this is going to really benefit the city long-term. And last, task eight is developing a comprehensive document that's going to summarize essentially everything that we did. We're going to go over our assumptions, the key findings, what methodologies we used. We want it to be graphic, we want to have one-page highlights, we want to have a lot of big exhibits that showcase what we've done, the results of the study. And then this is going to be not just a binder on a desk, but a reference to use when, when new development is happening, when issues come up. And so this is all going to be wrapped up into, into one organized and useful document. So talking about kind of documents and deliverables, these are the three main things that the city is going to be getting at the end of the study. These are the deliverables. So we talked about the report, it's going to be a comprehensive summary of the findings. It's going to include lots of appendices and exhibits, but really focus on making sure that the, the takeaway messages are there. That's the goal. This is not some two-thousand-page report, it's what do I really want to know from this study? Digital files, we're going to be generating a whole lot of technical information, models, GIS data. And that's all going to be packaged up together so that the city has one hard drive of everything on it that can be downloaded and saved. It's going to be a reference for future projects and studies. I talked about that web map earlier, having an internal and external component, it's really going to be a, a great tool for collecting information, communicating out the results of this study, and it could be added to in the future. It's really the, the foundation for a great communication tool. Last slide is on project schedule. And so there's a lot on here as well, you can see the eight different tasks. A few key highlights, we are going to be wrapped up by the end of May 2026. That is the pencils-down date. And so we've got about sixteen, seventeen months, we, we just started. You can see we're going to be doing coordination and community outreach throughout. And the, the other thing I want to highlight is, you know, those, those light kind of blue squares, those are all those workshops I talked about. And so as we get data, we're going to be reviewing it. As we work through that baseline conditions, we are going to be having workshops with the city, with stakeholders to say, hey, this is what we're seeing. Is this what you guys are seeing? Are we missing something? Let's collaborate together to make sure that we are getting the most accurate and comprehensive analysis done. And those workshops are going to continue all the way through the end as we talk about potential projects. And then we wrap up our final recommendations at the very end of the project and we deliver that final report.
Thanks, Jason, I'm sure, I'm sure we have some questions.
You want me to go first?
Councilmember Hanks.
Okay, first off, thank you. It was a very well-organized, comprehensive study outline. So I think you just hit the mark on that. I do have some questions though, on, just curious about this. But on the slide that was talking about the tax, the tasks, project development, you had fewer than or equal to fifteen projects. Where does fifteen, is that just from your experience what a city could handle? Or is there some research about that? Where did the fifteen come from?
It came from a coordination with the city as well as past experience on, on the number of projects. You know, we don't want to generate lists that, you know, are not going to ever really be touched and ever really have a chance to go through. So it's, it's talking with Hill, you know, what is a number that I think is a good place to? Yeah, a good place to start. Remember, those are going to include some small and some large projects. And so fifteen is a good number, you can, you can separate those and prioritize them. You don't, you have enough to kind of work with, but not too many to get overwhelmed by.
And so the other thing that I was really excited about in this is the project schedule. When you talked about having a City Council workshop on existing conditions, I think that's really, really important and I'm looking forward to that because I do want to make sure we understand exactly what's happening in our city in various spots. And that really brings up something else. So, because I'll hear from people sometimes in different neighborhoods. And so I want to make sure that we're looking at all of those things and that we are not focused on Clear Creek. So, or trying to fix Clear Creek, which we have no authority over and, and can't really control that. But we've spent or are refunding forty-one million dollars in bonds. We're probably the biggest player as far as Clear Creek and Friendswood, which was, it's not the city. And so I was elected in 2018 and that was right after Hurricane Harvey. It was a very emotional time and many people in our city were devastated by that flood. And so, but it never made sense to me that the city was taking such a strong leadership role and a financial, huge financial investment in something that we really, or we don't have the final say-so in. And so on this, and when we do that, then other things don't get done or they're, they're put on a back burner. So now I have more experience and I'm not afraid to speak my mind or my thoughts a little bit more than I was then. But I just want to make sure and want that confirmation, Mo, that this is, this is over the things that the city has the authority and responsibility to address and not something that we need partners in and that, that we need good faith partners in that, you know, that will step up to the table too and help us on addressing something we don't even really have the authority to fix.
That is correct. And some of these comments were raised during 2019, 2018, leading into 2019's bond election. At that time, there were partnerships out there that indicated that they would work with us on Clear Creek if we were able to leverage funding locally. But you are absolutely correct. After Hurricane Harvey, our sister cities in Pearland and Lake City also had bond elections, but neither one of those jurisdictions touched Clear Creek. They only worked on subdivisions within their community. Much is what we're tasked to do with. And so this effort-
That's what this is about. This is about our subdivisions and the things that we're responsible for. And not that I wouldn't want to help our citizens that were devastated because they are our citizens. And I do believe that partnerships are very important because we're all paying taxes and it would be great to work together to solve those problems. So I'm all for the partnerships. But I just think, I want this to be what we're supposed to be doing and what we're, what we have the authority and responsibility.
Correct. We aren't, we don't necessarily need to get partners to complete these, these projects.
I think that's a great point that you bring up because some citizens might not realize that there's two sides of the flooding and drainage. You know, we, the city, we're responsible for getting the water out of your gutters, into the storm sewer and into the creeks. After that, Drainage District, their responsibility is getting it down the creeks. And Jim, Rusty, Jason, thank you for being here tonight from the Drainage District. And welcome Roland to the Drainage District team. And so this is where we're talking about, how do we get the water out of my front yard, into Clear Creek or wherever it's going to go, whichever sub watershed I live in. But anyway, that's what we're talking about here. So yes, I think Marad made a good point because we did have an opportunity to spend some dollars on Clear Creek, but we were offered this opportunity to leverage money that we could get our taxpayers to put up. We could four or five times that money in, in projects. I don't know, Marad, you probably know.
And we've gotten some partnerships over the years, at least two to three to one, depending on the particular projects, and they have been favorable. But obviously, those funds have now been all, all been obligated and we're back at the well looking for other opportunities.
Yes, good.
And I still hear from people in subdivisions that are having problems. That's why I want to really make sure we're doing that.
We got to do the job. I know Mayor Protem Matranga's been writing furiously.
Oh, no, but, but thank you. You took one of my basic questions and you had a good, good discussion and answer on that. So I appreciate you clarin' that, clarifying that for everybody. As a, one of the relatively new council members, that, you know, it took a while for me to really understand how it all fit together and everybody does have to work together. But on these things in our neighborhoods, these are things that we can take leadership on. on and then work with others to help. But with that said, so moving on to my second question was on the public input. We've heard tonight from one of our residents already, hey, I wish I'd have known about that meeting. I am interested in, is that, just to confirm, and I'm sure you wouldn't do it otherwise, but you're gonna have the public input at times where there's still, it's not concrete. It's still something that we can change based on that input and that feedback we get from our residents, because, you know, we can't be everywhere all at once, and they can be. So hearing about things maybe we don't know about.
Correct. And I, so confirmed, but I would also encourage folks to stay engaged. So for instance, on the earlier master plan that was mentioned during public comments that's on your consent agenda later tonight, those public engagements were advertised on social media, on our website. We had over 1,000 responses with our online surveys. Even with that, following the workshop in January, y'all asked for some additional time for the public to have more input, and then we re-advertised it. So we can only push the information out. Folks have to want to receive the information and engage on our various media outlets. So if folks do engage you, please encourage them to visit our website. If they haven't liked and followed us on social media, they need to do so so that they can see some of these routine updates from time to time. And then also these meetings, these are great opportunities in which we have these workshops to convey their thoughts and comments, not only for y'all, but also for our engineering team and consultants that are here this evening.
I had just one more question. Rod, in our meeting when we were discussing this particular topic, I guess last week, that you had, I thought was a great answer.
I always do.
You did. It was a great answer.
I'm joking.
You did. And that was on, you know, this is not scheduled to be completed until May of 2026.
Correct.
And so we're gonna come up, we're gonna be coming into a budget cycle soon, start working on, you know, next year, you know, 2025, 2026 budgets. And I asked a question of you, hey, are we gonna have an opportunity to get some of the things that compare, you know, some of the fruit that is yielded from your work in doing this into those, you know, some of the smaller things? You know, obviously, bigger things are gonna take other financing mechanisms. But, and I'm gonna paraphrase it, and I probably won't get it right, and you'll get to clarify it for me, but what you really said is, you know, we're gonna learn lots of things going through this exercise, but probably not any new projects that we don't know about. There may be some, of course, but how to prioritize those is what we're really gonna learn from this. Would you say it better for me?
Sure.
That's what I gathered, and I really was, I thought that was a great answer, is that, because, you know, what you don't wanna do is get to May 2026 and go, aha, now we have all these projects that are gonna really help us. If we knew about them earlier, we could have started, you know, on the low-hanging fruit that, you know, inexpensive ones. But anyway.
Yes, sir. So our engineering team and our public works team are very adept to their work. They're familiar with the problem areas throughout town. The difficulty lies in scoping the project appropriately so that we can truly tackle the issue at hand. So this master drainage plan will help us in that regard. So for instance, if we know there's a 123 Main Street has an issue, they're able to look at it a little further and determine what is the cause of that issue so that we get the best return for our investment as opposed to us trying to go in there blindly and trying to tackle it.
I'd like to share just one project along the same lines with what Mo was saying. Brigadoon, we've had, we know of some drainage issues there. We've had some houses that have flooded. It's not on the creek. So that is a project that we knew was going to be a high-priority, off-creek-type project. We submitted an application with FEMA for a flood mitigation assistance grant or a scoping study. That's gonna be the real key first step here to really developing something that will have some bang for the buck, that will have a great effect for that neighborhood.
And that project will run faster than this drainage plan will be, and y'all can fund our local match as part of the upcoming budget cycle.
Thank y'all very much. I was all your questions.
How's Amber Graffon?
I just wanted to mention that I think this master drainage plan outline is awesome, and I do appreciate in the plan itself, its indication that it's willing to share this information with other districts, and we've got the Harris County Flood Control District, the Gallison County Consolidated Drainage District, and we have other developments that are coming on, too, like the Panhandle. And the Panhandle has had drainage plans done, paid for by private developers, and expended a great deal of funds, and I understand that we will be looking at those and possibly incorporating, like the Casari Plan, into our master drainage plan because we don't need to spend the same money twice. And I know the Gallison County Consolidated Drainage District was originally a partner in this master drainage plan, but because of the funding that we received, they stepped back from it, and they're doing a master drainage plan, but we don't, all our tax dollars don't need to be double-spent. So the ability to share this information with the Harris County Flood Control District, who has a federal project, and anybody that wants to go online and see what Harris County Flood Control District is doing north of us, can just look at the Harris County Flood Control District, go to a federal project which will affect Turkey Creek. And Turkey Creek will be coming in and feeding into the Panhandle. The Panhandle development has had some drainage plans, and I know Hill's working with some of that right now. So I think this is a great outline for us, and it'll especially help urban, urban and riverine drainage, and that's what we really need to do in-house as a city. Thank you, Trish, for bringing that up, and I'm looking forward to seeing what this produces for the city. Thank you, guys.
And you're absolutely correct in how this fits all together. When we are done with this, the Drainage District will be getting a copy of our models, all the information that we gather, and they've got their own master drainage plan coming down the road. It's gonna be something that they can build on.
Right, and we're seeing Georgetown now being phased in, in a little slower movement towards Georgetown, which will be feeding into Dixon Biowater Shed, and these types of things will help them to understand better what may be affecting them. So I really think that y'all are doing, I love the outline. I think y'all are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks, Hill. Good job. Item 10, City Manager's Report, presented by City Manager Murad Kabiri.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I have a number of items to present this evening, and two that aren't necessarily on the City Manager's Report but are in the consent agenda later on. First off, we had our Truck, Touch a Truck event this past February, the very first one in Friendswood's history. To say it was a success is an understatement. We had over 2,500 individuals show up. I think some adults were more excited than the kids to touch some of these large equipment, but we've already been asked to do another event next year, and it's gonna be even bigger and better. So stay tuned for that activity, and it will likely be relocated, but we were very proud of what we accomplished this year, and thanks to Parks, Communications, and every other department that was out there, it was a well-attended event. I would like to recognize our Finance Department. I know I sound like a broken record, but one of these years, they may not receive this reward, and I'm gonna be in big trouble when that happens, but they were recognized again for the 22nd consecutive year for the Distinguished Budget Award. This doesn't, this is not something to take lightly. There are a number of cities that don't receive this recognition, nor do they have the books that would qualify to receive this recognition. So thanks you to Rhonda and her team for the fantastic work that y'all do.
Good job, Rhonda.
The next few slides are gonna highlight some employees within our department, within our organization that are constantly looked at as authorities in their field. First up, our Director of Engineering, Hill Arias, was a panelist in the 2025 Water Environment Association of Texas seminar, talking about coastal resiliency and a number of other things. Next up, we have Aubrey Harbin, our Director of Community Development, far better than her predecessor, who was never asked to be on a panel. Presented at a local Stewart Title League City along development that takes place in Friendswood, and her counterpart in League City also spoke. Sidebar, her counterpart in League City leaned over at one part and said, how are y'all getting all those four-story office buildings and investments in Friendswood? Because League City's killing to have some of them, and they're just not getting the interest. So I think it has to do in large part to Mayor and Council on our fabulous Friendswood organization. Also, within community development, our GIS manager, Diana Lopez, was a panelist at the Texas Association of Government Information Technology Managers. This was a 96-person ticketed event that was sold out within a few minutes, so they're looking to expand it, and so thank you to Diana and for her expertise and the folks that manage our GIS day in and day out. Staying in the vein of awards, our library was recognized for the 11th consecutive year for the Excellence in Libraries that's put on by the Texas Municipal Library Directors' Association, only 102 out of the 542 public libraries that exist in Texas. You may recall, the number last year was 545, so I think three public libraries closed. But we're still in the, well in the upper echelon of libraries, so thank you to Matt and your team for the great work y'all do at the library. Speaking of the library, the gala is coming up this Saturday night. The theme is Camelot Beckons. We appreciate everybody that's volunteering to make this event happen. It is a fantastic event that's put on each year to raise funds for the library. Folks are encouraged to dress up in the Camelot theme. I will not be dressing up in the Camelot theme, but I will be there, and if you haven't bought a ticket, I would encourage you to do so. It is a fun evening, and the library is, it becomes a magical place. You'll be impressed with the decor and the atmosphere.
Don't you still have that Blue Sequin jacket? I mean, Sir Galahad?
I do. I'll have to find it. I'll have to find it. It's somewhere. Youth Sports Day is coming up, March 29th. This is the kickoff to our baseball and softball classics that take place each year. It's a fun event for the community in which various teams, both in Friendswood Youth Baseball, not Little League, and Friendswood Girl Softball do floats, and they have a parade that takes place that Saturday morning, along with some other festivities to kick off the spring season. Councilmember Branson mentioned Ball Business Week earlier on in our council comments. We will do some more advertising as we get closer to May, but I encourage folks to stay tuned and to engage. Fire Station Two is on the consent agenda this evening for acceptance into the one-year maintenance period. There will be a ribbon-cutting and a tour of that facility coming up shortly. We're coordinating with the Volunteer Fire Department to get that date scheduled. And last, Black Hawk Boulevard reconstruction is on consent as well. As we've notified council and the residents out on Black Hawk, we've run into an issue with our prime contractor, their inability to complete the project as contracted, and so we've had to call on their surety bonds. The item that's under consent is an emergency contract to button up the project and get some of the low-hanging fruit addressed as we incorporate the final phase, or the remaining task into the final phase of the construction.
And that will help those people get into the driveway.
It will address all those, so we will pour their driveways, we will finish the last section of streets that were already formed, as well as get rid of the equipment and the mounds and stuff that are out there, make sure that the storm sewers are appropriately connected so that there's no issue as we roll into the third and final phase of the project. And my apologies to the community and those residents in particular. I know it's a difficult situation. Unfortunately, our hands were tied legally in what we could and could not do, but now that we've exhausted all legal remedies, we were able to draw upon their performance bond.
And how long did it take us to be able to finally draw on their performance bonds?
It's taken several months because you have to go through a number of things that, to ensure that they're not able to complete the project.
And that is now gonna be folded into the third and final phase?
Yes, sir. Which is currently, was already designed and ready to go out for bid. Unfortunately, since we're having to expand the design for the third and final phase to include this section so that we get appropriate bids on it, we had to go back to expand the engineering plans.
Thank you, Murad.
Thank you.
Item 11, Disannexation of Unimproved Property in Portions of FM 528. It is 7:04 PM. I now call to order this public hearing concerning the proposed disannexation of one, approximately 130 acres located along FM 528 at the easternmost city limits, being out of the Thomas Choate League, Abstract 12, the August Whitlock Survey, Abstract 793, the Robert Wilson Survey, Abstract 88, and the John Dickinson Survey, Abstract 15, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas, and two portions of FM 528 located adjacent thereto and extending eastward approximately 0.67 miles. This public hearing is being held for the purposes of allowing all persons interested in the disannexation to be heard. Everyone desiring to be a part of this hearing should have completed the public hearing comic card in the foyer and submitted it to the City Secretary at the podium. Each participant should give his, her name and address or order provider. Okay, I'll skip over the rest of that.
So real quick, before we move on to the second item in this-
It's gonna allow staff to give us a quick-
Yes, sir. So this particular piece of property encompasses 130 acres of real estate on FM 528, as well as the right-of-way for FM 528 as you head towards I-45. It's just east of Autumn Creek. Close to about 18 months ago, the attorney representing the landowner approached the city of Friendswood to develop 50-foot lots out here and to create a municipal utility district. Historically, councils haven't been open to municipal utility districts, and so they asked if they can, they asked if they can talk to League City about potentially doing a boundary swap of sorts. I don't know why they asked, because they had already talked to League City beforehand, but League City was open to annexing this parcel, and in exchange for doing that, ending our agreement we had with them for Avalon. We had previously, you may recall, a large portion of Avalon was located in the city of League City. League City being unable to extend utilities sufficiently to serve that development allowed for us to annex the property, but in exchange for doing so, we split the ad valorem taxes over the next 20 years. Because of this de-annexation, we're gonna forego any further splitting of those ad valorem property taxes in Avalon.
Great. All right. There being no one desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing, and we move on to item 11B. 11B, Consider on First Reading in Ordnance, Disannexing One, Approximately 130 Acres Located Along FM 528 at the Easternmost City Limits, Being Out of the Thomas Choate League, Abstract 12, the August Whitlock Survey, Abstract 793, the Robert Wilson Survey, Abstract 88, and the John Dickinson Survey, Abstract 15, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas, and two portions of FM 528 located adjacent thereto and extending eastward approximately 0.67 miles. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir.
All right. Any questions or comments? Any discussion?
Just two clarification questions.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you. I just wanna confirm just one more time for the audience that the city doesn't own this property. This is privately held property or owned by Tech Todd. Is that correct? It just happens to be within our city limits.
Correct.
And that acreage is predominantly just empty land at this point, and it hasn't been developed, and we haven't had any plans or seen anybody come trying to develop it because we weren't willing to make some of the changes that League City is willing to make.
Correct.
About right?
It is correct, and also, if we were to retain it, we'd have to extend utilities to the site, which comes at a cost.
And so the net, the visual effect will be is that our Friendswood city limits will now become just east of Autumn Creek?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That was all I had.
Anybody else? Gonna get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? Motion passes seven-nothing. Item 11C, Consider an Interlocal Agreement with the City of League City for Friendswood to disannex, disannex, and for League City to annex approximately 130 acres located along FM 528, Harris County, Texas, at the easternmost limits of Friendswood, and two portions of FM 528 located adjacent thereto and extending eastward approximately 0.67 miles. Anything more to add on, we're just gonna, we got an interlocal.
No, no, sir. Our finance folks are excited to be done with this deal.
How much did we pay them this year?
I think 50-something thousand, or this year's 30, sorry.
$30,000. So, yeah, that adds up, and we had, what, 20 more years of paying them, so.
Correct, and it's only partially developed right now.
Only partially, so. They're saving some money on that deal.
Yes.
All right. Gonna get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? Seven to nothing. Moving on, item 12, Falling Leaf Ranch Public Improvement District, 12A, Consider Authorizing the Professional Services Payment Agreement with JMK5 Falling Leaf LLC for expenses associated with a public improvement district and a tax increment reinvestment zone concerning approximately 117.506 acres of land located within reinvestment zone number two, city of Friendswood. Murad?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, this item, along with the subsequent three items, are all related to the development of Falling Leaf Ranch, located just outside of Wilderness Trail subdivision, south of FM 2351 in the Baker Road area. This first agreement is the Professional Services Payment Agreement. This first agreement is the professional services payment agreement. And so, what this entails is the city of Friendswood incurs costs by hiring consultants to represent us in the negotiation and development of the agreements associated with it. The developer is charged with paying us back for any costs that we incur. And they're able to do this by establishing a $50,000 escrow fund that they're supposed to maintain at a certain level, to ensure that we have funds to cover our representation on this effort. The developer is, in advance of this agreement, has already provided that $50,000 escrow to get the project moving forward, to get, so that we're able to start reviewing plans and, and look at different things.
And we're hiring, who is our administrator?
So, the administrator would be P3 Works, who represents us on Friendswood City Center and, and TERS and PID number 1. And then, on the legal side, Bracewell.
P3 Works are experts in TERSs?
Yes, sir.
And their sole purpose is to guard and protect the interest of the city?
Yes, sir.
And see that our goals are met? They have the power of audit? They can audit any invoice that PID dollars are to pay for?
Yes, sir.
So, are we, are we hiring P3 right now? Because I am not a developer. I don't develop property. And I know that we have just under 42,000 residents in Friendswood, and the city of Friendswood does 41,000 different things every day to take care of the people here in Friendswood. So, I think that if we're hiring someone who's experts in this field, who have the power and authority to audit the books and to make sure that the city is not paying for anything that they shouldn't be, being paid for, then that protects the city and advances the goals and priorities of the city, right?
Correct.
Well, I mean, let me kind of add this ad to that, because no, no, it's a great point. I just wanted to add...
Point of order.
Sorry.
I still have the chair.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
There were several questions that were asked at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Will the section of Friendswood Parkway that will traverse the JMK5 Falling Leaf development be 100% paid for with the proposed PID bond debt money?
So, we'll...
I think that answer is yes, because that's, that is our public roadway that we're...
Correct.
...traversing through this area.
Correct.
Will 100% of the PID bond debt that will fund that section of the Parkway be 100% with TERS number 2 incremental city Friendswood tax dollars?
So, the total cost of infrastructure far exceeds what the PID assessment will generate, which ultimately amounts to the PID bonds that are issued and the tax increment reinvestment zone could fund. So, the totality of both those will cover the expenses of the public infrastructure associated with the project, namely Friendswood Parkway, as well as the administrative cost, so the cost of our attorneys and P3 to, to manage and monitor this.
Yeah. And, and, and the answer is yes. Ad valorem taxes within the tax incremental revenue zone is Friendswood tax dollars. I can agree with that.
Correct.
Will PID bond debt funds be used to pay for JMK's Falling Leaf paving of surface streets within the subdivision? I saw the plat of the subdivision. I love the 2-acre lots. I voted against my wife's first cousin out at Avalon because of the smaller lot. So, I, I do like the large lots. I've always supported larger lots. But we're talking here about now the surface streets within the subdivision itself. Will these PID bond debt dollars be paying for what many consider the developer's cost just to develop his own property?
So, we can get into that discussion a little later on under item D?
Of the development.
The development agreement. But I would be happy to answer that question when we get to that item.
I, I have, I'm going to have questions on that, too.
Yes, sir.
Okay. But we'll answer that question then. What percentage of that surface street? Okay, well, that's the same part. C, will TERS 2 incremental tax dollars be used to pay? Will TERS 2 incremental tax dollars be used to pay 100% of PID bond debt for JMK Falling Leaf? That's still going to be answered in the development agreement.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, then, at this point in A, we are hiring P3?
So, this agreement allows us to be reimbursed by the developer for hiring P3 and Bracewell ultimately?
Okay, so, I, I agreed to hire P3 in City Center?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's really all my questions now.
Mayor Proti with Trangga.
A little much, my chair.
Yes, sir. I was asking for your permission, but I can wait till later as well, because it'll be applicable to the comment.
To the development agreement.
When it get to the development agreement. But my comment here is, my question here is, I just want to confirm that as to form, this agreement with P3 is very similar to the other agreements that we've already approved that Councilmember Graffon has mentioned as well.
So, this agreement is with the developer, but yes, it is to the same, to form as what we did with the developer, Friendswood City Center, and the subsequent agreement with P3 is the same as what we did with the Friendswood City Center.
Okay. You're right.
Yes, sir.
Correct. Thank you for correcting me. Thank you.
Any other questions? Going to get a motion on item 12A?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
You said 12C?
12A.
12A.
I thought we'd already voted on that, but yes.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, John. I'm not going quick enough. Item 12B, consider authorizing an agreement for a public improvement district and tax increment reinvestment zone administration services with P3 Works LLC for a proposed development within reinvestment zone number 2, city of Friendswood. Murad?
So, in sequential order for what you all just approved, we're hiring P3 to represent us. That's going to be paid for by the developer and, so that the city's not out any funds to develop these.
And the developer has put up the $50,000 to start the funding?
Correct.
And P3 is in agreement not to receive funds until when?
Until after this contract is executed. So, they did work in good faith that, so that the project can move forward. And they're not getting the $50,000 upfront. They haven't done $50,000 worth of work.
No, I understand. I went through the whole thing, the hourly rates and all that stuff. But more importantly, P3 is our advocate.
Correct.
Is the advocate for the residents of Friendswood. And they are the city's advocate to make sure that whatever's turned in as an expense in the TERS is paid for properly and in the city's best interest.
Correct.
Okay.
Going to get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? 7-0. 12C, consider resolution accepting the Falling Leaf Ranch Public Improvement District petition concerning approximately 117.506 acres located southeast of Stonewall Pass Lane, southwest of, of Baker Road, northeast of Janet Lane, and northwest of Wilderness Trails, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, and calling a public hearing on the advisability of the proposed improvements. Murad?
So, Mr. Mayor, this evening, you, you guys are not creating a public improvement district. So, what has taken place is the city of Friendswood has received a petition to create a public improvement district. And as prescribed for under state law, we're required to go through a number of steps in order to create that PID, much like we did in the Friendswood City Center PID over on the Woodcombe property. Should you accept the petition this evening, you will have a public hearing a month from now. You may recall on the Friendswood City Center, we had multiple public hearings beyond what was asked for or required under state law, to allow the public ample time to come in and voice their thoughts and comments of the proposed projects. So, this evening, I would encourage you to, to, to move the step forward, to have the public hearing, to allow the public the opportunity to review the proposed improvements that are out there and to come in and voice their opinion. Approving this doesn't, doesn't create the PID. It simply calls for a public hearing in the future.
All right. April 7th. Right back here.
Right back here.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? 12D, consider authorizing a development agreement with JMK5 Falling Leaf LLC for Falling Leaf Ranch development. Murad, one more time.
Yes, sir. So, this one's a little bit more complicated and a lot lengthier. The city of Friendswood created the tax increment reinvestment zone a number of months back for this particular area. The, the main driver for this TERS was the ability to extend vital infrastructure, namely Friendswood Parkway, to meet the long-term vision of our community, to reduce congestion in other parts of this city, and to finally be able to develop Friendswood Parkway. There are multiple projects that are within the TERS. You may recall the Castle Bioscience Development Agreement that we executed a few, few months back. That project is currently under construction, has already gone vertical. This next segment involves a piece of property that's a little more difficult to develop. Put it bluntly, this is an old Exxon property that was part of the old Hastings Oil Fields. What you have here before you this evening is a development agreement that will outline the next steps moving forward. In addition to Friendswood Parkway, the city is able to get some assurances on the development of this property that we wouldn't otherwise be able to get. And what I mean by that is, without a TERS and a PID, the developer by state law is not obligated to present the city of Friendswood with any environmental clearance reports to require our approval, or to, to, to get our approval on any environmental remediation. That's not regulated by city law. It's regulated by state and federal law. And in fact, state law prohibits us from even requiring it as part of our development process. However, in doing a development agreement and doing a PID and a TERS, the city of Friendswood is allowed to ask for things above and beyond what's permitted in state law, simply because it's contract development, basically. So, in exchange for what the city of Friendswood is willing to do for the developer, we're able to ask of things of the developer to ensure that we have something that's developed properly and gets the assurances that, that are necessary. So, we've included as an exhibit to the development agreement, the deed transferring the property from Exxon to JMK5. We've included as an exhibit to the development agreement, the settlement agreement we have with Chris Johnson related to the movement of that roadway to the western, or eastern boundary of the property, as well as the environmental restrictions that were asked for, to be attained, to be met as well.
Ask a question?
Yes.
If I'm understanding correctly, this is going to allow us to protect our citizens, our community, make sure that this land is safe to build homes on?
Correct.
Essentially is what you're saying.
And the, the rules don't change. Even without this, they're still required to meet state and federal law. The limitation is the city of Friendswood has no part in that process. So, we can't require the developer to provide us those reports. We can't require the developer to provide us those clearances without the development agreement.
Any other comments or questions?
Go ahead.
No, you. You go ahead.
You go ahead.
I'll let you finish what you started.
No, I want to hear what you say, because I've, I've got some things I might tag along with you.
Mayor Proti with Trangga, why don't you go first?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then I, then I won't. Can I reserve the right if you don't ask a question?
You can speak twice.
No, you wouldn't talk. We can speak twice.
I'm just, I'm just...
But I'm not going to interrupt you when you, when you talk.
This is, this is number one.
I just didn't want to interrupt.
Oh.
I'm counting.
Okay. Yes, sir. Okay. So, in this development agreement, as had been stated earlier, the resident was correct. This is a lengthy document. It's a complicated document.
Correct.
But in, back to similar question that I asked earlier, as, as to form and the contents therein, it is very similar to the other agreements that we've seen before for development agreement with other people developing within TERS 1 and 2. Is that, is that correct?
Save and accept the environmental issues.
Yes, yes. But as to form, yes.
Yes.
I mean, the indemnities, the risks that we're taking, the risks that the developers are taking and those kind of things, the liabilities and so forth.
They're the same.
Great. But as to scope, obviously, different, different piece of property, different requirements. So, I, I wanted to confirm that. And two, what I wanted to say is, having read this document, having read the other development agreements as well, that I think what I was going to, and when I inappropriately interrupted you earlier, what I was trying to say at that point was, again, instead of just P3 being experts, I think that our attorneys, outside attorneys, have written excellent documents, such that other people have done TERS and have other lawyers and other people doing the administrative services. But in this particular one, I think these are well-crafted. You know, no, no document anywhere in our lives, whether it's a home mortgage or anything else, is 100% ironclad and perfect. But I think these are well-fought-out documents that tie together and help protect the citizens of Friendswood. So, I, not just P3 being experts, I think our attorneys, our outside attorneys, have also done an excellent job and wanted to make that point out there, that they're also out there looking to protect the city of Friendswood in developing these. This is something, it's a financing tool that's allowed by the state legislature, and this developer has asked to be included in that, in that process. So, that's all the comments that I had at this time. And we'll, I reserve one right to come back with a question.
Councilmember Graffon?
Under, under Section 8 of this development, and, and I agree with Joe. I applaud Karen and our city attorney-in, who they've worked with, to craft the four corners of this document. And in this document, it says, "Prior to construction of any public improvements, developers shall make or cause to be made applications for any necessary permits, approvals, required by the city or any applicable government entity," which also includes the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. This is prior to moving on. And this is in the agreement with JMK5. It also states in here that they will not allow mechanics and material men's liens to go unpaid. And I know that everybody's been sending me stuff in the papers and everything, but this is a horrible look. And I am very good friends with the Karen family, but I also have an obligation to each of you as residents of the Friendswood. And it says, "City seeks cover as lender seeks $400,000 from developer." And under Section 16 of this development agreement...
This is, what city is that?
Dickinson.
Dickinson.
But it's a public improvement district where the lender was not paid, based only on allegations made in this paper. And I know I've read paper articles all the time, and they are half-truths and, and anything like that. And I, and I voted against the development agreement in City Center 2 solely because we were using city funds within the detention ponds, which I thought should have all been PIT, but we used our funds for that. Now, in 16, if I can get down to it, and it's, and it's where it's, we have assignments. And I have had the time to read this, and it's correct. It's very long. Make-whole provisions, I like that. This agreement shall be binding upon and near to the benefit of the successors and signs of the party. The obligations, requirements, or covenants to develop the property, including construction of the public improvements, may be assigned to any affiliate thereof without the prior consent of the city. The obligations, requirements, or covenants to the development of the property, including construction of the public improvements, shall not be assigned to any non-affiliate without the prior written consent of the city, which consent shall not be unreasonably withheld. If the assignee demonstrates the financial ability to perform the reasonable judgment of the city council, each assignment shall be in writing executed to the developer, and the assignee shall be obligated, the assignee to be bound by this agreement. So, without our consent, this can be assigned in a lien or to a lender, but we as the city, or P3 as our advocates for the city, cannot pay the lender or pay the vendor who has filed a mechanic's lien, who's received an assignment without our consent. And we don't have the right to pay, which is what this city council is now looking at. They're looking at a situation where they entered into an agreement with JMK5, and the lender hasn't been paid. And now, they're saying, "We're going to pay the lender, but we could get in trouble because we're supposed to pay the developer who's supposed to pay the lender." And I would just like this to say in here, developer, listen, developer may assign any[1769.38] receivables or revenues due pursuant to this agreement or any reimbursement agreement to a third party without the consent of, but upon written notice to the city, provided, however, that notwithstanding the above, the city shall not be required to make partial payments to more than two parties as a result of an assignment and shall not execute any consent or make any representation with respect thereto. I think the city should have the ability not only to make those partial payments, but make those partial payments around the side of the developer if need be. And I, and I, and I don't say this in any malice, I don't say this in any way, shape, or form, other than to say, I don't want to be up here going, okay, we've got liens out here on this property and vendors aren't getting paid, we have lenders that have been not paid, and then we're providing these PID dollars, and, and, and I would like the ability to, if these interests are signed, especially in C, if these interests are signed, we have the right to pay those off. And I want the developer to agree with us as board of directors of the, of the, of the PID. I want the developer to go ahead and allow us that right, to say, okay, the city, if I don't pay them, you can, and I've got P3 protecting me, saying, okay, this is an audited invoice, and you, the city, can pay it, because we might not be seeing it getting paid. And this is not in any way a defamation of the, of the builder in any way, this is just a fact that we have evidence that some people have not been paid and the city council gets set up in a bind. And I would like this to be tabled and to be worked on where the city would be allowed to pay vendors who have gone out there and done the work, and they might have four and a half million dollars setting aside out there, and they're hoping and praying that when the PID dollars are allocated, they get paid, but the developer may not do that. And that is a trust element that we all must have, but we can verify it by saying, we have the right to do it if you don't. And I, I cannot support this development agreement the way it is written, and like I said, Karen, it's written perfectly, but I would like more authority for the city and the city council to protect us, the citizens, and the residents of Friendswood, to be able to pay the bills if, if, there are dollars, and they're taxpayers' dollars, and I want to be able to have that ability to do it.
Yes, sir. Is that a motion to table?
That's a motion to table this, to see if the developer will allow us to pay any lender who has been assigned a right or interest under this agreement. Any lender who has been assigned the right or interest under this agreement, that we be able to pay them directly.
Do you want to explain this at all before I call for a second, or?
Well, I cannot speak to this.
Maybe we can talk Robert out of his tabling motion if.
I'm not going to try to talk anybody into or out of anything, but.
It's all, I always, just remember, I've often asked for tables, and they've been seconded, and I've lost the vote. So if you do that, well, then my table's gone and we vote on it. That's as simple as it gets.
All I was going to say is, I don't know the specifics in Dickinson to speak intelligently as to.
I don't either. I just don't ever want that situation to be sitting at my desk.
Yes, sir.
All right, I got a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second to table this item. All in favor of tabling this item?
Does anyone want to discuss?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Go ahead.
Okay.
So I, you know, I understand what Robert's saying, but I don't know, I didn't hear the other side. I didn't hear the reasoning for not including that in the first place. And so I know Bracewell.
Correct.
And they are very good, and they know what they're talking about. So, so sorry, you want me to repeat that? Just kidding.
Go ahead.
I'm just kidding. So I know Bracewell, and I have a lot of respect for that, that attorney firm, and I know that they do top-notch work, and they're also very wordy, and that's why it's so long, but I don't understand why, you know what Robert brings up, I don't understand a downside to that. So I need more information.
So at the surface.
I think it's a good question, and I need more information.
Yes, ma'am. On the surface, the request that Councilmember Graffon made is a reasonable request, and we can expand the language. As mentioned earlier, it doesn't matter what document we, we draft, there will always be some nuance that is not quite as stringent as you would like it to be. But the developer is here this evening, if you want to ask them questions specifically to that and gauge their interest, if they're willing to amend the development agreement as drafted, to provide added assurances and protections with respect to the use of PID dollars and payment of the, to the developer and payment to the vendors and everything else, we're required to and do receive affidavits that the PID, that the bills have been paid before we release funds. So there is assurances that there's not a lien out there that has been unpaid and, and putting the city at additional exposure. I can't speak for Dickinson if they had those same fail safes in, in place, and so that very well may be the issue in Dickinson, is that they didn't have those protections in their agreements.
Well, I, I guess what, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't really know what the downside of doing what he says, and if there is one, I'd like to know what that is, before we take a legal document that attorneys have worked and change it.
All right, I recognize Jerome, Karen.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Council. So in regards to that document, in regards to the newspaper, I had an emergency Wednesday, so when I found out about it, I told him I could not talk. So what happened at Bayou Bend Estates was, I purchased 77 acres, I developed 77 acres. No way.
How many acres was it?
Fifty-four lots, 54 acres, 77 lots. I paid four and a half million dollars. It was confirmed, there wasn't one dollar on a, on a mechanic's lien or a vending lien. I had a lien, I had a secondary lien on the property. I gave him a first lien on the PID. The PID read that when I paid half, he would give me half. There's 77 individual lots. I paid half, eight hun, $400,000, and I still owe him 400, but the document reads, he's supposed to give me half. So it was a he said, she said, Mr. Hill died, I'm dealing with the lady, his wife, his widow, who is from England, and she would not turn it over. So instead of me arguing with the widow, I've said, fine, I will pay you in April, which I've already got the property, I've already got the PID sold for $1,600,000, I owe him 400. The lawyer and I had agreed, and we were writing it up, and we were doing this, and I have no idea, with all the issues in the world, why this made front-page news, other than it's JMK V. Have no idea. Fact that I give away millions of dollars, the fact that I'm going to own the largest indoor, indoor arena in, in, in the United States privately owned, that doesn't hit it as much as this right here. It's very offensive.
Well, Jerome, you know you and I are friends, and we go way back.
Of course.
Okay, so this has nothing to do personally. This has everything to do with my responsibility.
No, and I, and let me just comment right now. I love what you said.
I'm glad you're here to visit.
I love what you said, and I will say it right now, it would save me manpower, if, but the city of Dickinson, I, I paid 100% of the four and a half million dollars. How much, how much did we pay for the developer? I know that, I'm just asking my engineer.
Did you clarify that this for the PID was for the revenue streams that were to be reset back to us?
And they, and the widow, God bless her, her husband died, I understood, and I was being very patient, wouldn't give me my half, which was worth $800,000. It's worth $4 million over 30 years, and I had it sold for $1,600,000, she wouldn't turn it over. So we went back and forth, back and forth, so the attorney, Robin Clements, out of Alvin, said, "I'll just go to the city of Dickinson and get them to assign the $259,000 it's supposed to." I said, "Fine." I didn't go up there and argue. I owe him $400,000, big deal in my world. So it says that. So apparently, this was, because it was my name, it made the front page of the Dead Gum News, and I get $259,000 for the next 23 years. So I was happy to give it to her, but she wouldn't give me half of it. So he just went up to the city council and said, "City council, instead of giving it to JMK V, which they've paid me one year, can we have this?" I didn't oppose it, I said, "Take it, and I'll give you the extra $150,000 when I sell the PID revenue stream for $1,600,000." And apparently, this made front-page news.
You're doing the city a big favor by developing the public infrastructure for the city, the city's not doing it, and it's going to be paid for incrementally out of the tax dollars.
Yes, sir.
But, but why is the city of this, this city saying, well, we're going to go ahead and pay the lender?
I need you to listen to me, because it's very simple.
Okay.
It's called a PID, a public.
Improvement district.
Improvement district.
Right.
How it works is, we have 77 lots. When they bought my lots, Adam Homes, Guion Homes, Individuals, everyone commits, when they purchase the lot.
I've seen the backup material.
That they either pay the mortgage, but in addition, they pay JMK V 200 or $299, but when the city takes theirs, 6% to 8%, and then there's a, there's another company that takes 4,000 or 5,000, then there's an audit group that takes, it comes out to $259,000.
Right.
That's what I'm entitled to.
Right.
For the next 24 years.
Right.
I got it all ready.
And it ends, and that, and that is one of the reasons why I, and it ends.
100%. It's a 25-year income stream.
That's one of the reasons why I, that's one of the reasons why I like public improvement districts over a mud district, where a residence pays 100% of the ad valorem taxes to the city and continues to pay an additional amount to the mud. So personally, I would prefer a public infrastructure district over a mud district. I know that I've heard some others say that, that they would rather have a mud. I, I personally don't want to live in a mud. But this goes away, and it goes away because the people who buy those lots, they have the, it's right here, the backup, they know going in, they're buying a lot.
100%.
And they know that their taxes, even though it's tax dollars, is being paid for the improvements that you developed for the city. I completely understand.
Wait, hold on, you understand they pay the tax dollars, and in addition, they pay the PID.
Right.
And that, and they don't have to buy my two-acre lot.
Right.
The last time I checked, this will be the last San Marquina Estates duplicate in the city of Friendswood.
Now, you, you said earlier, Jerome, that you don't have a problem with Dickinson City Council paying the lender.
100%. In fact, I would prefer it.
Do you not have a problem with us doing that, the city council and the board of directors?
100%. I would welcome y'all to pay it.
I would like that reflected, and you would get your money, just like you're supposed to get your money, and.
I don't get that money, it goes to the vendors.
Yeah.
But 100%.
Okay.
Just like I paid the $50,000 to, to whatever these, one of these lawyers.
I'm good with that too, Jerome.
Okay, 100%.
All right, Rod.
If you would like to hear from Jonathan Frills with Bracewell.
I would love to.
As far as the.
I would love to hear from Jonathan.
Come on up, Jonathan from Bracewell.
Is he here?
Yes.
I didn't realize I didn't see you.
Oh, yeah.
Mayor members of council, city manager, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. So just a couple of things on these points. Number one, as it relates to payments to contractors, so let's talk about a couple of different things. As it relates to payments to contractors, before a payment can be made, there's an affidavit of all bills paid that comes back for contractors. So that part of the process and the payment is dealt with through that. On the assignments to lenders, so I think this is what your, your primary concern is.
It was both 8 and 16 of this agreement, so it's assignments to lenders.
So in, in a typical assignment to lender context, the, what, what happens is, the city is completely outside of that process. And again, we, we, in many respects, want to stay outside of that process. We don't want to be interjected in the middle of a fight between the developer and his lender. And so that's why it would just be notice coming to us of that assignment having been made, right? And so the lenders, the, the lender's remedy is to go against the developer if the developer fails to pay and not come.
Whose PID properties are assigned. So, so our properties, the developer has let be collateralized.
So what the, what, what has happened is that in those cases, the developer has given a lien on his future receivables under the, under the assessment. So he's not, he's not, he's not transferring the properties, right?
Right.
What he's doing is he's, he's collateralizing those payments. If he, if he defaults under his loans, typically the lender has the ability to foreclose on the property in order to take that down. And so the, the lender has a number of options of how he would go about foreclosing on that. It depends on what's in the loan documents as well. So I'm, I'd be somewhat hesitant to putting yourself in between the lender and the developer on that side when you don't have facts as it relates to what's going on. That could create a lot of opportunities for litigation that I think you generally want to avoid. And so that's why we've drafted the documents generally as we had. Could there be other, other options for dealing with that? Perhaps, it's not something that we typically see, if there's something like an all bills paid, or you're in compliance with your loans, but again, I don't know that we want to get fully involved in that third-party relationship that's going on between the.
I know that we don't, because we have 41,000 different things that we're doing besides this development. We want you to be involved. That's why we're hiring you to protect the interest of the city.
No, and that's what I'm saying, i- is that it may protect the interest of the city better to have some distance when that's something that's really a question between the developer and the lender, and then you have a structure that's set up in order to deal with the program.
I really appreciate that.
Can I ask a question? Just for clarification, what you're really, what I'm hearing you say is, we're better served by having sort of a wall, a distance, as you put it, a wall in between us and the developers, lenders, or, or mechanic's liens, or whatever, because the last thing we want to do is then open up a new avenue for lawsuits to come directly at us, because we may say, oh, well, we're not going to pay that directly for whatever reason. If we have that ability and we don't exercise it, and then that opens, I, I think, see that as more risk to us, and your point is, stay separated, because they have to provide that before we release any money, they have to show us that it's free and clear.
So, yeah, again, two, two different points.
Okay.
One, one on the construction side, you very clearly have to have the affidavits of all bill pay, bills paid, you've got to have the other kind of prerequisites to payment that are all laid out in the, in the request form that's in the back of the document. As it relates to the lending side, what we would say is, your obligation under this agreement is solely with the developer. And, or if there's an assignee that you've, you've amended the agreement with, and there's an obligation there, then you've got a, an obligation, but only if you have amended the agreement to bring that person in. I think it's better not to bring the lender into privacy of contract in most instances, and allow that to be kind of a developer-lender issue on that side.
The only other question I have, I've been in the oil and gas business virtually all of my life, and I know that people have come up to me, and, oh, this, this oil and gas, oil and gas and everything. For the most part, when we develop properties, we are clean as whistle, and this property, I'm sure, might have some spots that need to be mitigated, and they will be mitigated. And I applaud you all for the environmental covenants that you built into this agreement, or that you built into this agreement, because I feel that that protects us immensely. And I'm just wondering, the only question that I have in regards to that, can we require a phase one, phase two, or phase three? Because this is a buyer beware under circula, under all these federal statutes, which I used to operate my wells under, it's buyer beware, you are to be aware, and you should know before you purchase the property if you have an environmental hazard. If you don't, in which this document, which is the document that JMK has assigned to it by ExxonMobil, and I, and I've had assignments from ExxonMobil too, and the indemnifications on both sides, in due diligence, acquisition, and divestitures of oil and gas properties, the indemnifications on both sides are as complete as we can possibly make them, and the, like I said, environmental covenants that are built into this agreement are good. I'm just wondering if we can require a phase one and phase two, I don't, phase three would only be triggered if a phase two showed something.
He's Councilmember Graffon, that's a, a good point, and I'd like to point out, we, we addressed this in section 7.03 of the document, and so I'll just read it for you. It says, "Developer shall cause a phase one environmental site assessment and a phase two environmental site assess, assessment, and if required pursuant to the foregoing or otherwise requested by the city, a phase three environment, environmental site assessment to be conducted on the property, each of which must be either addressed to the city or delivered together with a letter from such consultants stating that the city may rely on such assessment, which assessment, and if applicable, the reliance letter shall be in a form substance scope from an independent environmental consultant acceptable in each case to the city. Developer shall obtain and deliver to the city plans sealed by an independent engineer, environmental credential professionals acceptable to the city, showing how all remediation, including without limitation, full compliance with the TCEQ requirements will be achieved."
Now, when does that occur? Prior to any disturbance of the surface, or when does that actually occur?
Prior to any disturbance of the surface. So prior to approval of plans, they're required to provide us all this.
I thought, I, I thought it was really good, the, the environmental mitigation and, and covenants were good. I, I just was wanting to make certain, and even for the residents to know, when, when these things happen and how they occur.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for Jonathan?
How many of you, how many of these have you all done?
We've, we've done a very large number of these all over the state. Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'm going to call for the vote on tabling this item. I am not going to vote to table this item, I'm ready to move forward with it. We spent money on Bracewell, they did a great job, this developer's done a lot of work himself, and, and so I am. This developer's done a lot of work himself and, and, uh, so I am, I'm ready to call for the vote. So on the motion to table this item, all in favor.
Is there a second?
Yes, I have a second. I have a first and a second.
John Ellisore seconded it. So all in favor of tabling and all opposed to table. So we're not going to table the item. So. Motion fails. So now, uh, let me, let me get a motion. And any more discussion on this item because I'm ready to call for a motion. All right. A motion, uh, on item 12D, consider authorizing a development agreement with J M K five Folling Leaf LLC for the Folling Leaf Ranch development. I get a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. No other discussion. All in favor. Opposed. Five to two. All right. Item 13, proposed ordinances and resolutions 13A, consider on second and final reading and ordinance amending appendix D, schedule of fees, rates, charges, deposits, bond and insurance amounts of the Friendswood City Code to update fees for building and building regulations, peddlers, solicitors, canvassers and itinerant vendors, wrecker service towing fees and credit card payment processing convenient fees. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor. Seven to nothing. 13B, consider on second and final reading and ordinance amending chapter two administration, article two, boards, committees and commissions, division four, community and economic development committee. Section two dash 41B, membership of the Friendswood City Code to add two new positions to the committee and establishing terms of office for the newly created positions in order to effectively stagger the terms of the committee members.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second. All in favor. Seven to nothing. 13C, consider an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of city of Friendswood Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bonds Series 2025, providing for the security of the bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying, of a paying agent registrar agreement, approval and approving an official statement and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. John Robuck.
Mayor, council members, good to see you all this evening.
What time did you get here?
We have some good news to report.
I've been here.
You haven't been here the whole, since 5:30.
Well, I got here a little later. It's outside. I didn't get a cookie. I missed the cookie.
All right. Well.
But I also want to introduce Nikki Hill, your bond counsel's here. She's called Parker's. She's the one that drafted the legal documents we're asking you to approve tonight. Um, I always like to do, this is a bond buyer index. This is basically weekly average municipal rates. Uh, the red line represents revenue bonds, which we sold today. Currently at a 4.44. It's a little higher than the, uh, average for the last 25 years. But we were able to enter the market and get a low rate. I will also point out, we contacted a bond insurance company to take your double A minus rating from S and P, which is strong. We were able to upgrade it to a double A. Cost is 35 thou- 30, roughly $35,000, but it saved us over about 245,000 or 265,000, excuse me, $300,000 difference in the cost, but, but 265,000 dollar difference of savings. We were, so we sold 20 million 350,000 in bonds to generate 2 million, 20 million, it's going to be 500,000 proceeds. We also funded the reserve fund requirement, which we're allowed, we're required to put into a account in case we don't have the funds to pay for the debt and also pay for the cost of issuance. So on the far left, your current debt service requirements for your water and sewer bonds, plus your principal and interest on the new bonds. The far right, your total requirements for the new and existing bonds. Sources of use of funds. Again, we sold 20 million 350,000 in bonds. Investors paid premium of 1 million 838,000. Again, bond insurance costs 30, a little over $35,000 and then cost of issuance is 241,000. Plus the, uh, deposit to the reserve fund requirement of 1.4 million dollars gives the total proceeds of 20 million 500,000. And all cost interest rate was a 4.172%. When I was here a month ago, it was actually about a 4.31 based on current market. Even though the yields have gone up because of the rating and also your name, we were able to lower the rates and the average life is a 15.66 years. Uh, from an interest cost perspective, the difference between what we showed you in February and now is about 1.5 million dollars. So we were able to lower interest costs by about 1.5, 1.5 million dollars. From a scheduled event standpoint, we've done everything on this sheet except for the last two items. We're asking you to approve the ordinance tonight, which is, uh, the second to last item. If you do that, we will close on March 27th, at which point you'll receive your funds. But overall, I'm very happy with the results. Underwriters did a really good job of selling the bonds. In fact, they took some bonds into inventory that they couldn't sell to keep the yields the same. So we were able to benefit from that.
Council member Brant.
Just a quick question. And you mentioned that we were double A minus by buying the insurance. We were able to get double A. When did we drop to double A minus?
So on the, the general obligation side, we were double A plus. On the revenue bond side, we were double A minus and have been the last couple.
For a while. Okay.
And it's, it's actually a great rating for the water, water and sewers.
You know, here we are in Friendswood. We're very, uh.
Want to defend. I mean.
I was just going to go talk with Rhonda, maybe buy her company.
No, revenue bonds are a little more risky. So rating companies be more risky.
Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor. Thank you, John.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Item 13D, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025 by approving budget amendment six and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds. Let me get a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor. Okay. Item 14, the consent agenda. Before I obtain a motion, uh, please note that one, there is a red line on the item that is your places noting a minor change in the electronic signature policy, item 14A. And two, item 14H is only for the purchase. We had said purchase and installation, three wa- traffic cabinets. Now we're going to purchase them and install them ourselves. So, uh, with those two revisions, um, and before we go, I think council member Hanks is looking at me like she has a question. We entertain a question on a different item before we.
Do I have to remove an item to have a question on?
I don't think so.
No, you can ask the question.
So I just, those goals in the, in the parks plan, we listed a bunch of goals. Uh, first off, I really like that plan. I like that they got so much community input. And if you get a copy of it, I know it's a lot people talked about tonight. But it's all the people's comments and how many people they interviewed and all that kind of stuff.
Correct.
But the goals that they listed, the specific projects, they're not necessarily the ones we would tackle first or commit to right away.
Correct. And so they represent the priority list as established from the public engagement piece, both in person as well as the online survey. Uh, but depending on availability of funding, much like we talked about in the master drainage plan, uh, we can take them out of any order. It gives us the ability to leverage this plan versus the grants that are out there. Uh, and not knowing if you have another question, I did want to speak to some of the comments that were raised in particular on the Lundie Lane property. That property was purchased in 2015 following the 2013 bond elections. There are multiple action, access options, uh, to include FM 528 by the Harbor Church as well as off of Lundie Lane. Uh, that property was secured by the city of Friendswood, uh, partly because of how cheap it was. Uh, 575,000 for 24 acres. In comparison, we bought one acre in that same time period for 240,000 dollars. Um, but we've already had discussions with the Harbor Church on maximizing and utilizing their parking lot and utilizing their access to avoid impacts to neighboring properties. With respect to the other uses that were raised and the concerns by the neighboring property owners, that's what the, those that responded to the public engagements wanted. Um, obviously the projects aren't scoped yet. Uh, it will require a bond election to achieve these. So there's going to be ample time for others to engage throughout those processes to, uh, voice their opinion.
So those things were not identified as, this is what we're going to do here. That is not what this plan says.
So they identified a multitude of uses that folks said they would like to see out there. Um, folks have been asking for a skate park for a number of years in Friendswood. We have yet to get one. Honestly, I don't want one because of the liability, but I may get outvoted on that.
And I object to skateboarders being called riffraff and drug users.
You came up here on a skateboard, didn't you?
I have several skateboards.
Yes, sir.
All right. I get a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
All in favor. Okay. Check my watch. 7:59, will now recess and conduct an executive session pursuant to section 551 dot 071 of the Texas Government Code to seek the advice of the city attorney regarding cause number 18 dash C V dash 0108 in the 122nd Judicial District Court, Kalson County, Texas. And now reconvene the open meeting of Friendswood City Council and announce that in accordance with section 551 dot 102 of the Texas Government Code, no action was taken in executive session.
One, two, three. We, we have it.
We're here. We got it.
I don't think anybody'd be out here.
We are adjourned.
Adjourned.
We are here to be supported. We appreciate that support. Now we're going home.